Welcome everyone for today's special meeting at 6:00 PM, Thursday, June 19th, 2025. Roll call please.
Mayor Alma Beltran.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Janie Molina.
Present.
Member Diego Garza.
Absent.
Councilmember Kathy Solorio. City Clerk and the Treasurer are absent.
Please raise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our common purpose.
Megan, the closed session item so that we can, in case there's any public comments, being that there's no one here, there's no public comments, but maybe you can still go over the item?
We're, we, there are no public comments for closed session, but before we go into closed session, it'll be conference with legal counsel related to public employee appointment for city manager pursuant to government code section 54957.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, good evening. We're back from closed session. There is nothing to report. And the special meeting is adjourned and we'll be back at 6:30 for regular special, the regular scheduled meeting. Thank you. Okay, welcome everyone for today's regular scheduled meeting for Thursday, June 19, 2025. It is, what time is it? 6:34. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alma Beltran.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Winnie Edmond Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Absent.
Councilmember Kathy Solorio.
Present.
Treasurer Ishmael Spandola.
Present.
Please rise for the flag salute.
The President will give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every creature and all living.
Okay, all righty, so we're going to add for a presentation, I didn't get the name for the mosquito abatement.
Jody Homan.
Jody Homan for the mosquito abatement, and you'll be after unwired broadband, okay? Huh? Okay, yeah. So we can start off with the presentation planning assistance with measure C update from Robert Phipps.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me. My name is Robert Phipps. I'm the executive director with Fresno Council of Governments, your regional transportation planning agency. And we're here tonight to talk about what's going on with measure C, the regional transportation sales tax measure that is looking at a renewal effort for 2026. So we have a pre, a short presentation for you. Is that ready to queued up? There we go. Okay, so if you can, you're going to advance the slides for, okay, thank you, Berta. Okay, so go ahead. Yeah, so the, to begin with, just to note that measure C, this is not a new tax. In fact, if anything, it's quite the opposite. It's going on 40 years old. First instituted, passed in 1986. This is a measure that has been with the Fresno region for some time and is largely responsible for having transformed our transportation network as we know it today. A lot of younger people, you know, we found don't remember measure C. They don't understand the impact that it's had over the years. And of course, it has evolved considerably in that 40-year time span. The first measure focusing primarily in 1986 on local streets and roads maintenance and then also what we call the regional projects, which are the big capital expansion projects that were responsible, especially in those early years, for the widenings and extensions of like state route 41 to the south toward Paso Robles and to the north. State Route 180 and 168, the braided ramps that are in Fresno, but also major interregional projects that carried traffic from multiple communities, including Manning Avenue. So this is a continuation of that effort. You may recall that this was on the ballot in 2022 and did not pass, although it did receive a substantial majority of the vote. It did get 58% approval, but the standard for measures like this that are very specific is actually 66.7%. And it did not reach that threshold. But without it, you would see major, major cuts to road maintenance, transit operations, and major transportation projects that would be at least delayed by several years or cut entirely. Next slide, please. So in its lifetime, measure C itself has actually only generated about $2 billion locally. But the, what I, what I tell people is the secret sauce has actually been in its ability to leverage an additional $8 billion over that timeframe in matching funds from the state and federal governments. And that is, that's where the magic really occurs, is from both a local perspective as well as on a regional basis for the major capital projects, the ability to, you know, front load these projects that have multiple phases involved in them, you know, in terms of there's engineering, there's, you know, design, right away acquisition, and finally, construction. So, you know, what the formula has been is to use measure C dollars upfront for the early phases and then turn to grant programs at the state and federal level primarily for the last phase for construction. Because that's what the state and federal governments like to see is, number one, skin in the game, you know, in terms of a local investment. This is not something that you're asking the state or federal government to do on its own. But number two, the fact that you're able to, you're bringing money to the table, but also you're able to demonstrate your involvement with the, you know, the partnership of it and leveraging those funds. And so on, again, road repairs, capital improvements, public transit, this formula has been used over and over again for cities like Parlier, all the way up to major, major interchange projects and road expansions. Next slide, please. And so what is it, what is it costing our households to do this? On average, about $8 a month. You know, this is somewhat income sensitive, so some households, lower income households might pay $4 a month on average. Higher income households might pay about 12. This is excluding major, you know, one-time purchases like a car or major appliances, that sort of thing, but on a, on a month-to-month basis, about $8 on average. And so, but, but very interestingly, about 25% of that is coming from outside, from people who are visiting Fresno County, either here, you know, to visit family or friends, or going to one of the national parks, you know, or just passing through. But only about 75% of it is actually paid by our residents. Next slide. So for the 2026 effort, you know, we have begun, started down the path of the renewal effort. What is the next measure going to look like? And we're looking at, at this point, it's very much a blank slate, you know, an empty circle so that people can fill in what the, what the pie should look like. And we begin with a steering committee whose focus is on four primary different issues. One is the length of the measure. You know, is it 10 years? Is it 20 years? Is it 30 years? What is the revenue allocation by category? And we've tried to simplify that for this measure. Again, in 1986, it was very simple. It was local streets and roads, and it was capital projects. When the measure was first renewed in 2006, that formula, you know, changed considerably, became a lot more complex in terms of the number of categories that were eligible for funding. And so today, you have things like transit-oriented development. You have a senior script program that helps fund subsidized taxi rides for seniors over 70. You have a new technology fund for, you know, things like intelligent transportation systems. You know, a variety of projects, transit in 2006 was introduced for the first time, bicycle and pedestrian projects. And so we know a lot of these are going to carry forward in, in 2026. There's still a lot of interest in these. These are the major modes of transportation in our region. But perhaps not all of them, or there may be new ones that are introduced. We don't know. You know, we, we're asking the people, and that's a big part of our process, is what do the people want to see in this measure? We're going through that right now. So the second major issue that the steering committee is going to be dealing with is how much should each category be receiving? And of course, that has to be limited to transportation issues or transportation expenditures, and then also compliant with California state law. We are under the PUC code here in this effort. And then you have the revenue allocation by agency, and then finally, the oversight and accountability and reporting. and then finally, the, uh, oversight and accountability and reporting requirements, uh, that are dealing with that, that we anticipate are going to need to be beefed up for, for this measure, uh, or for this renewal. Go on, next me- next slide. So, as part of this effort, this is the, um, existing Measure C website, uh, measurec.com, and, uh, it has, uh, been, uh, uh, reimagined and remodeled considerably, uh, in just the past couple of months to include expenditures in, in terms of transparency, public transparency, to include, uh, uh, a, a much more comprehensive look at how much, uh, each agency, each, uh, jurisdiction has received in Measure C funds, uh, specifically, uh, in each category, and how those funds have been expended, perhaps not on a line-by-line item basis, because we are talking about forty years of, of expenditures, but, uh, so certain, uh, major projects have been highlighted, uh, and so for anyone who's interested in seeing how the money has been spent, uh, you can go onto this website, measurec.com, go under Programs and Projects, and you can pull out by community, how much has gone to, to each community and where it's been spent. Next slide. Uh, so for, uh, the city of Parlier in particular, uh, just since two thousand and six, uh, six, six point eight million, uh, in this, uh, current measure, and you can see some of the projects that have been, uh, that have received funding locally, uh, Manning Avenue, Parlier, Mendocino, um, the Parlier Safe Routes to Schools project at the, uh, John Martinez Elementary School, uh, South Bend, Ben D'Amida's Elementary, uh, Caesar Chavez Elementary, uh, Brightech, uh, Elementary, Parlier High, and, uh, Parlier Junior High. Uh, and, and again, uh, leveraging, in most cases, we're not talking about Measure C paying for the entire project, but, but, you know, using it as matching funds to, uh, to help leverage additional state and federal dollars. Uh, and that's in addition to ADA curb ramps, uh, pavement striping, street lighting, and reflective markers. Now, what you don't see in this list, that is important to remember, is, uh, for example, your transit service, uh, that, that, uh, comes through from the Fresno County Rural Transit Agency. So, uh, the, uh, FCRTA also receives a share of Measure C funding that it's able to use to help subsidize its service to Parlier and other communities, which then reserves, uh, di- uh, other state funding for you, so that you're not having to use that for transit service, for example. So there are additional dollars beyond the six point eight that, that's mentioned here. This is what's coming directly back to the city itself, but there are indirect benefits that you receive, you know, if you're traveling, again, if you're traveling on state route forty-one, if you've ever used Veterans Boulevard, right? That was a big Measure C project. If, if you use these interregional routes, um, you're getting the benefit of Measure C, and you may have seen the signs that say, you know, this project paid for by Measure C dollars. Next slide, please. So again, what, what is, you know, what does the future hold? What is the next measure going to look like? And the answer is, we don't know, but we're working to find out. Next slide. And so this is the new, uh, Measure C website, that is to say, the renewal website. This is measurectwentytwenty-six.com, and, uh, we're asking people to, to go here and to register their opinions, their votes. Uh, we know that Measure C is not perfect. It's not a silver bullet. It's not going to ever pay for, uh, everything that we need. You know, we, we know that, uh, the, the cities and the county have a backlog of deferred road maintenance that is, uh, never going to be met, uh, by Measure C alone, uh, and so, uh, but we also know that there's, uh, an emphasis, you know, from what we can tell so far, uh, on local street and road maintenance, a big, big emphasis on that, uh, to date that we've seen, and, and we understand that, and, uh, Measure C twenty twenty-six gives the public the opportunity to, uh, cast their vote for what they want the measure to look like. Uh, next slide, please. Helps you build the plan, and so if you see here on the right, we have this online tool that, uh, breaks it down into four major categories, kind of, uh, simplifies the process by assigning, uh, the equivalent of a hundred dollars or a hundred points, you know, a hundred percent, uh, funding, and asks the public, where, where do you want to see the money? How much would you, you know, how would you divide it up? And you can put a hundred percent of it into road maintenance if you want, uh, or you can split it up however you like, including, uh, another category. Uh, so, uh, the four categories that, that I've kind of already mentioned, public transportation, uh, bicycle and pedestrian projects are what we call active transportation projects, um, the, the big regional projects, the big capital ones, and then the local street and road maintenance are the four major categories. We assume that there are going to be subcategories within those. We don't know what those are going to be yet, but like I said, we're, we're asking people that, uh, uh, early and often, uh, to get that information, and this is just one of the ways in which we're doing it. Next slide. Uh, so another, another way is, is, you know, through, uh, collaborative, um, uh, comprehensive and, and, you know, holistic community outreach, multiple different workshops. You can see, uh, the listing here of, of, uh, the, the ones that are, uh, coming up, uh, next. We actually, this one's a little further out. We do have two that are going to be occurring in Fresno, uh, in later this month, uh, before we, we come back out into, uh, the, uh, uh, outside of the metro area. Um, but in addition to this, we have door-to-door canvassing occurring, yeah, in places like Parlier. Uh, we've already talked to about thirteen hundred residents so far. Uh, we have, you know, social media postings, we've got radio ads, uh, uh, directing folks to that Measure C twenty twenty-six website. Um, so we're doing everything that we possibly can think of to, uh, to get people to participate and let us know what they think, where should the money be going. Next slide, please. And so, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, take any comments.
I have a question. Um, I know that the, there was a meeting in Reedley. Uh, when was that?
The meeting in Reedley was, uh, I want to say, uh, at, toward the beginning of the month, uh, yeah.
Okay, so then you'll have another ones that you posted up there for, for like Sanger, Sal- I mean Fowler and Salma.
Right, and we have, and again, that's all on Measure C twenty twenty-six. You can follow the schedule.
Okay, um, so for the ones that are not able to commute to those locations, uh, is there going to be something in Parlier, something maybe that can be held, or?
I don't believe we have a community workshop scheduled in Parlier specifically. We do have a virtual workshop that is, and like I said, what we've been doing in Parlier specifically is door- is canvassing, is door-to-door. We've been going to door-to-door with essentially a, a hard copy version of that online tool, a survey, that is, you know, asking people, where would you like to see the money?
And I think that works-
And how would you like to see it, it broken down?
That works a lot better too, because there's some that won't come out even when we have things here, so that does help.
And we've also had focus groups, you know, as, as well. We had about eight different focus groups, uh, including two that were Spanish-only, um, you know, so we're, we're trying to be, uh, as thorough and culturally sensitive as we, as we possibly can.
Yeah, and just to also mention, um, the city of Parlier right now currently receives almost approximately six hundred thousand, uh, which is good. Uh, we could receive more. With the last measure, we were, uh, supposed to receive like two million, two point three. Unfortunately, it did not pass, but we're hoping that with this measure, it does pass, because that will bring a lot more revenue for the small rural communities, because we depend on these fundings to work on our roads, and some people don't understand that, um, the cities like Parlier, Orange Cove, Mendota, and Huron, they don't have the resources to be able to pay for a lot of the projects that we are currently working on. So because of Measure C, we are, you know, we should continue to support it. It's a good thing for the small, uh, rural communities, because once it's gone, we're gonna look at r- roads that are gonna be falling apart, and there's no way of, of, of ever getting those fundings back unless they do a new measure, but that takes a long time, a lot of work. So, it's been since nineteen eighty-six. It's been, uh, working really well for a lot of the communities throughout Fresno County, and, you know, it's funded so many projects, like the V- Veterans Boulevard. That's one of the major ones that you did mention. There's another one on, um, Golden State and, and Salma, which-
Big interme- yeah.
You know, we were part of that, you know, they, they did the groundbreaking and, and worked on all that stuff, but these things, a lot of people didn't know that were funded by Measure C. Sometimes people think that it's like the city of Salma paying for it, and that I'm glad that there is more signs out there showing where the funding is coming from. You know, we need to, uh, make sure that the communities do know, so they continue to support it, so that way, when they complain about a pothole that's been there, that's how it's gonna get paid to be repaved, not, and not just only some of them will be covered, but you can repave the whole entire sea- street by those funds. And it is matching funds, and I know Javier's worked a lot with the staff at the Fresno COG, um, to get these fundings, to make sure that Parlier gets the funding that it needs to, um, for safe routes to school. I think one of them, it's, um, Madsen, right, that we're using some of the funding from that too, uh, with COG and Measure C funds that are combined, to create, uh, a safe route for, uh, our students. And, and with the new renewal, uh, that's one of the things that, with the board members, that we're working on to include, uh, more funding for, uh, safe routes to school, because we see the need to make sure and ensure that those kids get to school safely and get home safely as well, so.
Right, yeah, and, and the, the issue, especially for our smaller jurisdictions, you know, as you say, Mayor, our, our smaller jurisdictions are especially at risk, because in, in places like Fresno or Clovis, you may have recently seen, you know, they're looking at a, at bonding, you know, uh, for a hu- a hundred million dollars, which certainly, that's one-tenth of their problem, right, in terms of their backlog, but it's something. It's something that they can do. Uh, the smaller jurisdictions don't have the capacity to do that, and furthermore, uh, you know, a- as I mentioned before, if Measure C goes away, now transit operations, if you want to maintain the level of transit service that you already have, that then i- is also having to, you know, there's more pressure, uh, on local funding for that kind of service, which takes more money out of the pot for local street and road maintenance, uh, if, if the measure goes away, because now the, the transit agencies don't have, uh, that to rely on either.
Right.
And so, yeah, so it's a double hit. It can be a double hit to, to our smaller communities especially.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any questions?
Uh, yes. I, I did get to, uh, attend the, the outreach they had at, uh, Reedley, at the community center. Um, I was, one question did, I did ask is, why wasn't one done here in Parlier? Because I did see, it was multiple cities around us that were having these outreach. Um, it was really, really informative, and they had the survey there. You were able to survey, do your surveys, what do you want to see come to your city?
Right.
Which I thought it was really, really good. Um, and I believe there was two of them in Reedley. I think it was the one at the community center, and I believe there was another one a couple of weeks later, I think, either the high school or the college, one of them.
There was, there was, we were invited by the Rotary to, to speak, yeah, and, and we did speak there. And what we can do, what, what we certainly can, so the, the outreach, the, the, uh, workshops that you, like the one you attended, those are being handled by a third-party contractor firm that, that we've hired to help set those up. They're, they're kind of a big deal. They take a lot of effort to, to establish. Now, what we can do, and I'm, I'm happy to do that personally, is, uh, if we're invited to a, a, a group meeting here, you know, uh, and I know, I, you, right now, you do not have a Chamber of Commerce.
No, we don't.
Right, uh, but if there is a service club, or is there someone who would host such a presentation, like the one we're giving tonight, we're happy to do that, and we can bring the tech with us, uh, to, to do the live, you know, as you saw, the live polling, uh, the, the surveys that, that I think you participated in, you would have participated in, in Reedley. And so, yeah, we're, we're happy to do that, uh, as we're requested to do so. It's just not the major community event where we're renting a hall and, you know, or renting a space and, uh, providing, uh, you know, the, the dinner and, and, and all of that.
Robert, um, also Kendall did mention that, that if we have events, don't you have that, uh, event in August for the law enforcement?
We can have a booth, yeah, we can set up a booth, right.
That, that's where we can, um, have Kendall and, and the staff go out there and, uh, have information and, and maybe bring them out during, because Brenda also said, if we had any events, to bring them out, to let them know, and, uh, that way they can-
Yeah, and the residents can do the surveys.
Right, oh absolutely, yeah, we can either, and again, so they can do it from their phone, right, but if, if they don't have it, or if they're uncomfortable with that for some reason, we also have hard copies, you know, that we can take and we, and we input it, uh, when we, when we take them back home. And so, um, yeah, that's, that's not an issue at all. We're happy to do that. Uh, we have pop-up, we, you know, that's another element of this, is pop-up events, booths at pop-up events, um, uh, you know, or at different celebrations throughout the county. We're doing that as well, uh, and most of it, again, designed to push, uh, uh, traffic to the website, but where that's not possible or not desirable, we, we do have hard copy surveys available that people, people can fill out right on the spot.
Okay, I had another question, and it was brought up in one of our council meetings by one of our residents, and the question was, how, how, or how and who decides how much, uh, the funds comes to our communities? Since we're smaller communities, of course, Fresno, they're bigger, they're gonna probably get more funding than our rural communities, like our smaller cities, but who decides how and how much comes to our communities?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so the, the answer essentially is, is it starts with that steering committee, okay? So you have the steering committee, which is not empowered to make any decisions per se, but they make recommendations. And so the recommendations ultimately go to the, uh, so, uh, statutorily speaking, Fresno Council of Governments, uh, as the planning agency, is responsible under PUC statute for developing the expenditure plan. So that, it, you know, the, uh, it, it starts with us, right, and then it goes to the administering agency. There's actually two different agencies involved. Uh, uh, the Fresno County Transportation Authority actually administers Measure C, and so it has to be vetted through them as well, but under statute, it then has to go through each city council by resolution, as well as the Board of Supervisors, and then it has to go back a second time to the Board of Supervisors to, to be ratified for the ballot. And so, uh, under, under that, um, scenario, or under, under that, uh, uh, structure, um, the requirement is at least, uh, a majority of the cities representing a majority of the population of Fresno County have to approve. And so functionally, that means nine cities would have to sign off in order to, in order for it to, to become, uh, you know, an ordinance, essentially.
Yeah, and, and that, that was a process we did in twenty-two.
Right.
It did come to the council, but it goes through the processes as far as the steering committee. At that time, it was a work, a group, working group, where I was part of that working group.
Right.
But now it's, it's a different, uh, they're, we're doing a different approach, but, uh, it still goes to the COG, and that's where all the mayors are there.
Right.
And they approve it. It also has to come back to the cities for the council, the, the entire council to, uh, review and approve.
Right, well, and the, and the Fresno County Transportation Authority, FCTA, right.
Right, yeah.
So COG, COG develops it, and it goes, and, and approves it, and then it goes to the FCTA, which has to approve it, and then it goes out to the city. Now, at the point where that happens, now it's, it's basically an up or down vote, because you're doing it by resolution. You either approve it or you disapprove it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You mentioned the pie earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a, a graph of that anywhere, so we can have it to see, like, the last time the Measure C, how much the towns got and everybody got, the percentage?
Well, I, I don't have it on me, and it wasn't in that presentation, but the answer's yes. It's on the Measure C site, the existing, which is measurec.com, but roughly, uh, the, the big categories, I can remember off the top of my head, you had roughly thirty percent that went to, um, uh, a little over thirty percent that went to the big regional projects. You had about twenty-four percent that went to transit. You have about thirty-five, thirty, roughly thirty-five percent that go to the local jurisdictions, but within that, there are subprograms. So there's, uh, within that thirty-five percent, there's, uh, I want to say it's eleven, um, eleven, twelve percent that is mandated, maybe fifteen, that is mandated for street and road maintenance, and then there's another pot that's known as flexible funding. So what we find, especially in the smaller jurisdictions, is that also, practically speaking, that also goes to local street and road maintenance, right, but it doesn't have to. It can be spent on, on just about anything that you want, that, as long as it's transportation-related, and that is spelled out in the implementing guidelines of, of the measure as to what the eligible expenditures are. And then there's a, a very small portion, about, uh, I think, two to three percent, uh, that come to the local governments for, uh, ADA accessibility, you know, and that's often included, like, if a, if you have a major road rehabilitation project, you typically will add, uh, cutouts, you know, curb gutter, sidewalk, uh, you know, th- those are typically included, uh, very often in, in those kinds of projects anyway. And so again, uh, kind of part of the road maintenance picture. So about, about somewhere around thirty, uh, thirty-four percent, thirty-five percent, that was for local, uh, local governance.
You mentioned ADA, right?
Uh-huh.
Can you explain, please, how would they use that ADA? Can you explain please how would they use that ADA?
Okay, so the ADA, uh Americans with Disabilities Act, right? And the, there's a federal mandate, uh you know, and I can't remember what the date was, but to uh uh, you know, to make. Uh especially at intersections, for example, uh to make uh curbing ADA accessible for, you know, wheelchair, for for the wheelchair-bound, uh you know. Uh and so we're talking about, we're talking about instead of a a step up from a curb, you know, a cutout. That allows for a a wheelchair to roll over it and then, and then, you know, come up onto, so you know, that's, that's one example. But there's, there's numerous other examples, ramps instead of steps, essentially is the idea of a conversion of 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 uh steps to ramps. Essentially, or or cutouts that allow, at intersections, that allow for wheelchair accessibilities, uh sidewalk installations, these kinds of things. Yeah, absolutely, uh-huh.
No, you too, no? Well, thank you, Robert, for that presentation, I think it was excellent, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you again for having us. And uh another, another point, uh Councilmember Molina, we we are happy to come back in front of your council anytime you'd like us. We, you know, we hope to be here again early and often. Uh I I think we were here uh probably at least, what, maybe four months ago? Uh this is, this is not our first time presenting uh in front of your council and we're happy to to keep doing that. It is our intention to keep you informed and updated on what's going on. Uh so uh again, uh happy to answer any invitation that you'd care to issue. And uh i- if you would like a a specific workshop where we are providing uh that survey uh uh option, we're, we're happy to to meet that.
I I will make sure that maybe uh Bertha or Asserta, when you have that set up for that date, for that event. That way we can have, it would be important for um the community.
And and I think it would be, it'd be good to have you at our National Night Out. Because a lot of families go out there and a lot of times, they, you know, they do, they come home tired from work, they don't want to be on the phone. And they're out there, they're walking around, they'll be able to talk, you know, to somebody and ask questions. So I think that'd be great, so that'd be a good thing, Chief, thank you.
Oh, absolutely, and and again, as a reminder, we are canvassing in Parlier, so we are going door to door.
It's good, it's still good, you're still getting out there.
So we're trying to get to where the people are, you know, and it, because it's not, it's not always the best strategy. And we realize that's the, that's the the drawback of the workshops, is the workshops allow for people, the opportunity for people to come together. But it's also asking them to come to us and that's not always the best strategy. And so uh we try to mix it up and make sure that we're, we're following a variety of, you know, using a variety of tactics to 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 get to the the folks' opinion. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Wonderful questions, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, thank you. Next we have um Measure Q Committee, Fernando Benuelos.
Good evening, the City of Central uh Staff and Citizens of Parlier. My name is Fernando Benuelos and I'm part of the Oversight Committee for Measure Q, which includes Bobby Peralis. Uh from Pac Auto, Lily, Lily Renteria, and Eugenia Flores from uh the district. Our task is to oversee the financial spending of Measure Q in the police station. One of the tasks is to oversee the salaries in the police officers, our findings are as follow, follows. The average salary with benefits of the police officers is over, over ninety thousand per year. We understand that Parlier needs to be competitive with salaries. Seven years ago, Parlier was the third least of salaries and could not maintain a police base. Parlier is fifteen percent above the Central Valley salaries. The committee clearly understands that we need these salaries to maintain competitiveness. However, we feel at the same point, a burden to the taxpayers and especially community members over the age of sixty. Will meet a milestone, someday they'll meet the milestone, they cannot longer pay land taxes and thus maintain way of life. Suggestions? Now that we have a new city manager, we would like to address the city business plan, how he will bring the city forward in the next ten to fifteen years. And insert business and manufacturing created a tax base. The city of Parlier can no longer continue maintaining a negative tax base and always relying on city bonds. The city must insert industry and housing that will bring in tax income. The citizens of Parlier can no longer sustain its budget without growth. Again, we appreciate the police force who have kept our streets safe and maintained stability. Thank you very much, any questions?
I just want to say thank you and thank your, the board for the um, the Oversight Committee for Measure Q. I feel it's really important, I know we have been talking about it quite a lot. I was in the first, um, when we first started passing Measure Q, we ended up going through different, different stages. Where we did the police department, fire department, then we just did the police department and finally passed it. And that was one thing that I remember that we had put on the measure, was that there was, should be an Oversight Committee for Measure Q. We do have an advisory committee that we did have already prior to your, your board. But I think it's really important that we do have that Oversight Committee, not just for Measure Q, but for any other measures that we have. Any other grants that we have, cause uh it's always good to have extra eyes, make sure everything's going good. And if there's any kind of um, of obstacles, hey, how do we fix it? What do we have to do to to make it better? So I want to thank you and the board for giving your time, cause it's all volunteer, giving your time to be able to do this for us, thank you.
Thank you, in fact, uh you know, we have Eugenia and Bob and uh we bring a lot of situations to the, to the chief. In fact, the chief has been very cordial, insightful, he's been fantastic. And uh, you know, we give him a lot of different questions that we're not here to, to talk about and yet he's always been. Uh you know, fully with all the information. So we also have the uh chief's um advisory, something like that, that we do have other situations we'll be bringing up. Because we do hear about the citizens of Parlier. Uh that will be addressing some of those issues, because there's a lot of them, you know, nobody comes over here because they're afraid of either, you know, immigration. Or afraid of just speaking out, uh but you know, we're out there, you know, uh the eyes and ears of the, of the city.
Well, I.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
I gotta say Fernando, you guys are doing an excellent job and that's good, you're giving us an update in on it. Because I wasn't in the advisory board and it was really fantastic. Like you said, the input we give and everything helps our community and stuff, so you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you, and we also, I I guess that the salaries, you know, we're always looking at that and we ask the chief, is, you know, we ask him questions. Why is this salary, what's this with that, and he's always been really clear. And then we were like, okay, now that makes sense, cause there's a lot of people out there, and I hate to say it, who always question things, mocks. And they're saying, well, they're, you know, they're taking the money, no, they're not. It's money well spent and look at the crime, it's gone down quite a bit. And the chief is doing everybody else, as far as the city council, doing a fantastic job, so thank you for each one of you.
Um, I just want to say thank you, um, thank you for the update. And like Janie said, we've been talking about making sure there was an Oversight Committee, I'm glad that has happened. Um but again, thank you for the update and as long as you keep doing this, just keep coming to give us updates, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and then again, we we do comparisons of other cities and then we look at the cities, how much they pay. And if we're competitive or even, even better, uh because of the chief, that we have maintained, you know, more of a police department, so.
I want to thank you for the short notice, I know that I did talk to chief, cause I wanted you to present this. Um because it's one of the requirements for the measure and we have been out of compliance for some time. So I'm glad that you were able to prepare, you know, with such short notice to be able to present something. But um although you did present some information, I think for, if you could work on the next presentation, cause it's once a year. It's not like quarterly, you don't have to come to us quarterly, but you guys do meet often. I don't know if it's once a month or not, but whenever you're able to meet. Um I think it's important to also share with us the expenses. Because the measure was passed to hire more officers. The purpose of the measure is not for salaries, it was for hiring more officers, because if you remember, we didn't have enough officers at the time. So the reason why the voters supported this measure was to hire more officers to have more boots on the ground, to more coverage. Which we did have for a little while, now we're back kind of like, I guess, going backwards to not having enough uh officers on patrol. So I think um also monitoring, cause the purpose of the oversight is to oversee the expenses of what's being used for the uh Measure Q. So if all the, the funding is being used for just raises, that's something that you need to address to us. So that we can make sure that it does not happen that way, that we are actually spending the funding on what the voters voted on. Um you can go to the uh, the website for the Fresno County Elections Office and you can actually see the measure there and read more thoroughly of what it has. Um so that you can have an idea what you really need to look at. I think you guys did a great job bringing whatever you were able to at, as such a short notice, because I did talk to chief uh just about a week ago. And uh you were able to present something like this and which is good. But for the future, if you can look at those other things and look at the measure and see um what else you need to present to us. So that we are aware of what is not um happening or what we need to do different. Not because we want to attack or we want to uh say anything negative, but that's how you oversee something, you look at it. You know it's something that's missing or that something should be there that wasn't there, then you bring it to us. And then we'll, we'll instruct our, our staff to make sure that that is covered. And and that's when, one of the things that I think it's very important for your committee to be uh involved. Um in what's going on with the actual funding. So if you could do that for me, I would really appreciate that, you know, I'm sure the council would like to hear too, from, from uh, from your side of what you see. Or where the needs need to be, because the voters are the ones who voted for this. And the voters were very um adamant that the reason why they voted for the, for that measure this time around and not the other times. Was because it was to hire more police officers to have more law enforcement, more boots on the ground. So that it can be, they feel more safe in their community.
Those are valid points, thank you for that, I think next time uh I can make a synopsis.
Yeah.
Uh an outline and then of all the different uh spend, expenditures, then from there, I can probably, you know, turn it in first. And then, you know, read it first and then oversee it.
Yeah.
And if there's any points that we need to address.
Yeah.
Then, you know, we can kind of extend it and I, uh this is my first time.
No, I know, I'm not, I'm not, that's why. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to get on you for it, I, that's why I'm saying thank you, because it was short notice and you were still able to do something for the council. Um being that we're already on the end of our fiscal year, but.
Yeah.
You know, for, like, you have plenty of time for next year, you know, what you could look at and what you see, what you want to see, what the community wants to see. Uh what should be for, um, we should be paying for Measure Q.
I, I, you had a really good point, I, I think, uh, you know, I might even go knock on some doors and see what the community, you know, what is their responses? I think it would be really, really nice. Um and, you know, maybe have one or two people from the community and and to see, you know, are we investing in, in our city? And, you know, what is the outcome, what do they think about that, I think will be good uh feedback, so thank you for that, good point.
Yeah, anything you can bring to us that, that we may not know, that you hear and you see, that's the purpose of this whole oversight. So you can bring it to us so that we can know, oh, this is what's missing, this is what we're seeing, this is what the people want and, and it's, and it's in the actual measure. As long as it's within compliance with the measure, what it stipulates there, we're, we're good. If there, if there's something else that they want to see, then we have to find other resources for it. But as long as it's covering what the voters actually approved.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have um Unwired Broadband um informational presentation.
Good evening, Councilmembers, City Staff and Residents of the community. My name is John Majors and I'm the Vice President of Operations with Unwired Broadband. And I'm here this evening to speak with you in regards to the recent utility strikes with our citywide fiber to the home project. Um so to start with, we understand um the challenges that we're faced with this project with having um limited availability to as-bilts for the existing infrastructure. Um we've worked closely with Javier and and his team uh to uh work with an outside entity um to be able to locate the, the city infrastructure. Um we had identified proactively prior to the um shutdown of the project. Um that the uh GPR, the Ground Penetrating Radar that, that was recommended to be used for these locates was inadequate. And that's where we had met with Javier on site at some of the locations and and we were able to propose uh a new entity that we've used. Um called Accurate Line Locating Based out of Los Angeles. They have uh camera systems um that they actually run through the pipes to give us an accurate location of not only the mains, but also the laterals that are feeding each parcel. Um so with that, we had agreed to um dispatch them, we've done so even during the shutdown in, in the areas that um we haven't um done construction in yet. So that way we could kind of see the difference between the GPR and um the uh camera systems um accuracy. And we were able to identify that numerous lines were able to be identified, that if we would have ultimately built into that area, they would have resulted in strikes. Um so with that being said, um I know that I had sent some information last month to you guys about our investigation that we had conducted internally. As well as the um information from the uh US, USA uh dig system as well and and their findings. Um and I'm not sure if you guys have had a chance to review any of that, but I wanted to kind of open it up to you guys and see if we could answer any sort of questions that may be um out there for, for us to answer.
Some question?
So. I, I think it was back in February, uh we addressed some concerns and some challenges that appeared to be impacting our community. And that's in respect to rupturing lines, whether water lines, gas lines, or sewage lines. And because of those complaints and the outcry from the community, we had to have an amendment to the contract. And there was some uh, um, some clear conditions and stipulations that were made on that contract. About uh future proactive strategies to reduce those, those strikes. So I do want to mention that, that the council did uh out of professional courtesy and extended their courtesy. Um to continue with that contract under those conditions that uh you provided, I, I believe. And I, I think that, that negotiation was conducted with our, our city attorney, uh Megan Varanian. So as of, as of recent, um, I think there were two uh, two concerns regarding two specific, specific incidents. Where water mains were struck and there was a large sizable amount of water that was uh, that was flowing down the streets. And we got enormous complaints on those and I believe those, those two ruptures were within uh, within a week or two of each other, or ten days of each other. So that drew a lot of concern, we got a lot of complaints from the community. Um so I did ask our, our Public Works and City Engineer to look into that, because like I said, we had experienced this in the past. And it created such an impact and, and a detriment to our, our residents and respect to being able to have fresh running water. And uh plug toilets, and so it's a huge inconvenience that uh we really wanted to minimize. And uh we understand it's a great service they're trying to provide, but in the process, uh the hardship that it is creating uh is, is a concern. So uh that's kind of where we're at now and when those ruptures, uh ruptures occurred, we did suspend services regarding digging and, and trenching. And that's until we could uh further look into matters, but uh I do want to ask our, our city engineer if he has any uh, any background information on, on those particular situations.
Javier, can you go over what was discussed as far as um the problems that not, it's not a one-sided problem. But also the, the maps that were inaccurate as far as where to locate these um lines. So if our maps are not reflecting where they should be, it's not like they're going to be able to know where it's at. Because our, our maps are not consistent to where our lines should be. So that's the, that's also the problem. That is why you uh went out and also had an investigation done and you got a report saying that it's not uh due to your fault. Because of the fact that we're not consistent with our maps and where the lines are at. So if they're not accurate, when they're going to go dig and it says, right here is clear and you go hit that line and it's there. Then that's when you're not going to know, because it's underground, you can't physically see these things, it's not visible. So can you kind of go over that, please?
Yeah, so there's two, two things, um our new side of town, we have plans, because you know, um, in the last like ten years or so. We've, we've been able to accumulate just subdivisions, things being built, so we have records of that. But the majority of town is older than ten years, so in the places where, you know, it's. So in the places where, you know, it's 40, 60 years old, back then you had maybe documents that are handwritten, maybe like they installed the water line, but didn't really put it anywhere, documented it. And we're not special to that. There are a lot of cities that is the case. You're never going to have all your utilities perfectly mapped. I don't know a single person that has that. So we're not unique to that. But yeah, we do, we, our Platts, sometimes it's just some records I could find is just a line down the middle of the road saying, there's water in here somewhere. And it's old, old records. And we can't change that, like I said, but we're not unique to that.
And sorry, to add to Chief Serta's points about the amendment to the Master Encroachment Agreement. So initially, when we had first done the agreement with the city of Parlear, the city was going to be responsible for locating their own utilities. When we did the amendment, that's where we had agreed to work with an outside recommended entity to be able to do those locates. And then we even took it a step further, where we were going to then, with our internal resources, identify each parcel and make sure that they had the respective utilities marked. So if we went to a home or a business and we saw that a water line wasn't marked, we weren't going to continue with drilling operations until that line was located. And that was in a best effort to avoid any of these issues that we've seen. The challenge with the two specific water mains that were struck, if you look at those photos that we had sent you, you can see that there was a main marked down those roads. And you can identify that through the blue markings that were on the ground. So the lines that were marked for us, we were able to identify. And what made it even more challenging in those situations is that you had multiple mains running down a single road, which is kind of uncommon.
Yeah. And that's in the older area where you're talking about. And because one of the things that, as, when I asked, and the new, and Javier also talked about this, is that the newer areas, it's not going to be as difficult, but the older ones, what's more within 40 years downtown is, I don't even know how old, but it's old. And well, we have clay plumbing, you know, so that tells you. So I kind of see why that would happen. So to me, it's not about just stopping a construction or a development or something that the community is going to benefit. I think it's just working together and figuring out how we can do this, especially downtown, because the other developments are going to be a lot easier. But at least with downtown, how we can work together to make sure that it doesn't continue to happen and create inconveniences for the community members, you know, that's, that's the reason why I'm sure that the council brought this up to Serta, because, you know, I heard it too. The only thing that, that they didn't understand, some of them, was when they would see that they had put, they made these holes and they would put the asphalt. And when they would ask me, I would explain that you were going to come back and put concrete there. So then they said, oh, okay, makes sense. But it didn't affect the entire area, but it did, we did have those concerns about the ones that were struck. So if, I don't know, maybe if Javier, you can, and well, we'll have a new city manager soon and maybe you guys can sit down and figure out a solution, because how, is it like 50% complete or where are we with this, this process?
So we have roughly three weeks of underground construction left to complete at that point. And those are predominantly in the northern areas of town, which is the newer construction that Javier was referring to. So with that being said, after we complete that, that three weeks of drilling, then we have our handhole placement, the fiber installation, the termination and testing, and then the restoration. So as far as a timeline for a complete restoration to the city, we're looking at roughly 60 days from commencement of construction again. And the other, the other side of that as well is that you guys will also have records with us, camera, with running the cameras in these other areas. It provides a lot of detailed data that will hopefully benefit the city for any sort of projects that may exist like this in the future.
Yeah, because I'm sure we'll run across those problems in the future too, if we can't locate them. So I don't know, any other questions?
My biggest concern was those mains that got hit. I mean, we had calls, like I had calls like crazy. It's kind of hard, because it was the second time that this happened. The first time I did bring it up to Chief, because they were digging, going to start digging in my yard and I was like, wait a minute, wait a minute. We said nothing about digging in our yards. And they had already digged in my neighbors' yards and people in my, in my neighborhood. So this time, you know, our bathrooms are backed up. They couldn't take showers when they got home from work. So it's kind of hard, because you, you want the best, but then also we got to hear our residents. You know, they come home from work, they want to be able to come home and take a shower. And they're like, well, how long is it going to take? And it took quite a long, it took quite a while to fix it, to fix it. I even had, I haven't had residents that got charged to have their sewer line unplugged and stuff with everything that was going on. They did get reimbursed. I was told they got reimbursed and everything. But it's kind of hard, because we're putting our community out there and we have to listen to them too. And being it the second time, that's kind of like a little hard for me to like, do we do it again? Is it going to happen again?
It's not an action item. This is only informational.
Yeah.
So
I also feel the same way, because people were coming to my house at 11:00, 11:30, Javier knows, knocking on my door. What's going on? We need to use our restroom. Where do we go? We can't take a shower when we got out of work. Then they did one residence and they busted her line to sewer and what have you. And the next house, they did it, but they didn't report the next house. So this person called me at night to tell me that they were having problems. So that, and they were neighbors. And this was not, I told Javier that this was not reported. You guys didn't report it to Javier.
Is this over on Amigo? Yeah, so the challenge with, with those two sewer laterals that were hit during the same bore was that on one parcel, you have three different homes. And then on the other parcel, there, it's a single-family dwelling unit, but there was two different laterals for that home. One was, and that was actually the location that Javier and I had met on, was because the, the one for the three homes had multiple sewage going to that parcel. So one was identified, one was not. The one with the single-family home had a, forgive me, a leach line that was installed and it was a two-inch leach line that isn't able to be identified through GPR. And it was also done, my understanding is not through the formal permitting process. So that would have been challenging for us to identify.
So you're telling us right now that now you got a camera so it can go wonder and that's going to guide you guys where to cut and what have you. What do you think the percentage would be on that for not hitting or striking anything, you know? Just give us some information so we can share it with our constituents, please?
Absolutely. Industry, industry normal with a project like this is for every thousand locates, there's one strike. And an example of that is like each home in the city of Parlear, they have power, they have gas, they have sewage and they have water. So there's four different utilities that are located for each parcel. So if you look at the thousand locates per strike, then that would be a strike every 250 homes. That's industry normal. We're well above that in the city of Parlear. And with, to answer your question, this example of the sewer laterals, it's one of the reasons why we wanted to deploy the camera system, is because even though that lateral wasn't added through the traditional permitting process, if we ran the camera down the main, we would have been able to identify the lateral, whether the city knew about it or not.
Well, that's sad, because that should have been done prior, so we wouldn't have the second incident. You guys should have had that camera in hand.
And I think it's more of because of the older side of town. And I don't think they probably didn't, yeah, it happens. My, I always just looked at my, my house was built in 1915. So yeah, and I'm in town. So yeah, there's probably some of those things, because people probably put their own lines in. You have multiple dwellings in each property and, and it, it was an accident. I mean, and unfortunately, this is like Janie was saying, it's a good thing for the community, but it's just, the process has been a little difficult. But I think in the end, everybody will, you know, kind of will benefit from it. But again, I, I think it's just, you know, now the camera thing, yeah, that's perfect, that's what we need, because we have so many, we have multiple dwellings on each partial. And again, it's that, you know, the west side of town, east side of town, they're older homes.
I understand that, but I said, thank you for the idea, which was kind of a little late, because a lot of people got hurt, I mean, not hurt physically, but with their time, taking showers, using the restroom. We should, the first time that that happened, that camera should have been in use the second time, so we won't have it the second time.
So I guess, that's what I'll get to say. So then, this is just informational, so what we can do is have you meet with Javier and our new city manager and, and find a way to get through this process, because we're not going to leave our city halfly done. I think it's important, now that you went out and actually made the extra expense to, to resolve the problems, I'm sure that you'll be able to. So maybe, what is it, the 30th, maybe in the first week of July? Because our, our city manager, our new city manager will be starting by then, will be there, here by then. And this way you can have us sit down with them and maybe like work something out as how we can do it in a, in a way that, that it doesn't create any more inconveniences. Because right now, this is just for information, because I know there was these questions, concerns. So you, you know, you presented to us, you do have that audit report that also stipulates that it was not any fault, which I see it, because like we mentioned, there, back years ago, there was no permitting process. And anybody in the community of Parlear that's lived here long enough will tell you that there was a lot of things being built, that they built themselves and were connected to our main line. So it's like, some of these things did happen way years ago. Now with our new developments, of course, that's not happening anymore. And that should be a lot easier and a smoother way to get these things done. So I don't have any other questions. I think it's just informational. If there's any other issues or anything for the future, you can just set up an appointment with our new city manager and our engineer and we can figure out a way to, to get this to be completed.
I agree, Mayor Bill Tran, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to, to hear me out and, and for us to work together on, on moving this project forward. As Unwired has been a partner of Parlear since 2013, when we turned up our tower off of Manning, we're committed to providing that fast, reliable internet for the community. And so I look forward to working with the new city manager and Javier to resolution, to find a resolution for this project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have mosquito abatement. Jody.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jody Holman. I am the district manager for the Consolidated Mosquito Abatement District. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the district's mosquito control efforts in the city of Parlear. As some of you may recall, the district provides mosquito control services across more than 1,100 square miles in Fresno County, including the city of Parlear. Since 2013, the district has been engaged in an intensive effort to combat 80s agipte and aggressive invasive mosquito species. In pursuit of more effective control measures, we have partnered with researchers to develop and evaluate new technologies targeting this specific species. From 2016 to 2019, the district operated under experimental use permits from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, also known as the EPA, and research authorizations from the California Department of Pesticide Regulation, CDPR, to test the use of Wolbachia-infected male mosquitoes, a form of sterile insect technique also commonly referred to as SIT. These trials demonstrated remarkable success, achieving over 98% reduction of 80s agipte populations in the release areas that we did this in, which were conducted in the cities of Clovis and Fresno. As a result of these successful evaluations, Wolbachia male mosquitoes are now fully registered as a biological pesticide by both the EPA and CDPR. This means mosquito-controlled districts throughout California can now purchase and apply Wolbachia-infected males as they would any other registered mosquito control product. So how exactly does this type of SIT work? So this type of SIT using Wolbachia involves releasing male mosquitoes infected with a naturally occurring bacterium called Wolbachia. When these males mate with wild female 80s agipte, which do not carry this exact same strain of Wolbachia, the resulting eggs do not hatch. This is due to a biological phenomenon known as cosmic incompatibility. This prevents reproduction that leads to a gradual reduction of the mosquito population over time. It's important to note that male mosquitoes do not bite. That's why this control strategy can work. We can release male mosquitoes into a neighborhood, into an environment. These mosquitoes will go out, they will mate with females, but they are not biting anybody or anything. The district plans, and this is safe, again, this bacteria is a naturally occurring bacteria. It exists in insects all over the place. It exists in actually other mosquito species that we have locally here throughout Fresno County. So this bacterium is not something that's, you know, cocked up in a lab or comes from other places. It's a naturally occurring bacteria throughout the environment. The district plans to use this biological control method to reduce mosquito populations in the city of Parlear. However, it's not necessarily a cheap control method, so it's going to be used in a very targeted neighborhood in the city of Parlear. So I want to give, I wanted to take the opportunity to describe what this control program looks like. We will be releasing 15,000 male 80s agipte mosquitoes twice per week. That's 30,000 males. That may seem like a lot, but it's really not. The goal with releasing such a high number of male mosquitoes, and I want to say this again, we've done this before. We did it for four years. So this is not, and in the state of California, there's no district that has more experience working with sterile male mosquito releases than consolidated MAD. So we have a ton of experience doing this. We need to be able to dominate all the mating effort within this community. So we need to make sure that we're putting more males into this neighborhood than are already there. We want to make sure that our male mosquitoes are mating with all the females that are in there, because the male and female mosquitoes, they only mate once. So once a female mates with a male mosquito, that's it. She's done. She has enough eggs to deposit for the rest of her life. So we want to make sure that our male mosquitoes that are sterile are dominating all of the mating that's going to happen. It's going to be a 16-week release period from, starting at the end of June, all the way through October. That's tentatively what it's planned for, but we are closely monitoring this program. So releases could stop sooner. We are not going to continue to release male mosquitoes if we've gotten rid of all the female mosquitoes. The goal is elimination. So it could vary. We also will likely be doing wide-area larvicide spraying to supplement the releases. But again, we will be monitoring all of this to determine what is the best control intervention. And the reason why we're adding the wide-area larvicide spraying, we know that with SIT programs, you need to start early. We should have started in April. We're not starting in April. Mostly because when you look at this type of intervention strategy, most districts are going to have to be doing releases when potentially you see disease or when you see high abundance. So the district is looking at what type of level of control can we have when we start to see mosquito populations start to rise, or if we see an imported case of disease or even locally transmitted disease. California is now seeing locally acquired cases of Dengue in Southern California. That's new for the state of California. We don't have any locally acquired cases in Fresno County. I want to make that very clear. But the district is looking at control strategies that will be actually effective for this species, because right now, we have very limited control strategies that work. The district is doing outreach specifically in the neighborhood that we're targeting. And let me just go back really quick. The neighborhood that we're targeting is north of Manning, south of Tuolumne, between Madison and Oritt Avenue. We have already been in this neighborhood. We already have traps in this neighborhood. We are doing extensive monitoring. We already know what the 80s agipte population. This neighborhood was targeted for a very specific reason. One, we have historical trap data, so we know the 80s agipte population is unfortunately thriving in this community. And also there are some natural barriers to movement of mosquitoes in and out of this community. And so we are doing outreach right now. I have some brochures that I'm going to leave for you guys to keep here in case anybody comes by. But this is information that we're giving to residents. It's given, it's being distributed in both English and Spanish. And we also have information on our website that includes an educational video. Again, all content is both in English and in Spanish. And as I mentioned, the program is being monitored extensively with mosquito traps that are being, that are placed throughout this neighborhood. Staff will be in the neighborhood each week, monitoring these releases in addition to the program activity. And we will make adjustments based on data, based on the information that we are collecting. I have with me today, one of our staff members, Anna Ramirez Perez. She actually holds a bachelor's and a master's degree in biology and she's currently serving as an intern with the district, but she's with the with the district, but she's with the Pacific Southwest Centers for Excellence in Vector Born Disease. She's fluent in both English and Spanish, and she has been going door-to-door. In addition to, and talking to residents about the program, anybody that we cannot reach by knocking on the door, there is a door hanger that's left on every single property. In the past, the district has done specific outreach events, we have found that they're not that effective, mostly because it's hard to get people to come and attend educational outreach events, it's very difficult. We were deciding between this neighborhood in Parlier and a neighborhood in Kingsburg, we decided on this neighborhood for now, we may also do releases in the city of Kingsburg as well. Our office is literally right down the street, we are super accessible to the residents of Parlier, which is why we chose this particular area, in addition to, as I mentioned, the natural barriers, but then also the historical data that we have from trapping in this neighborhood. Our goal is to be very accessible to the residents of the city of Parlier, so that they can have their questions answered. What we will do is, any events that are being held in the city of Parlier, we will absolutely be out there with a table, informational booth, a lot of times what we do is we bring a cage full of male 80s agipti mosquitoes, the kids love it, 'cause they love to stick their arm in there and they can see, male mosquitoes don't bite, usually freaks out the adults, we typically don't have their, adults willing to stick their hands in there, but the kids absolutely love it. As I mentioned, the program goal is to eliminate, I always, it's something that we in mosquito control don't usually use that word, I'm confident that with the control tools that we have, that we could potentially get to elimination of this mosquito species in this neighborhood, we certainly are going for suppression. There's nothing that we need the city council to do, we just kindly ask that any calls, questions, or inquiries that are received by the city, that they get directed to the district. As I said, I will leave information here, I guess I'll probably leave it with Bertha, so if you, if there, if anybody comes looking for information, you'll have something that has our information, our website, there's a QR code that they can scan it, and then of course, you know, we just ask that you direct them to, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do you have a map for the area that you're talking about in here in Parlier?
Yes, there's a map in the brochure, there's also a map that's on the website that shows that specific area.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So those are the 80s agipti, most people describe them as super, super tiny, they typically bite the lower extremities, most people don't even, they're scratching before, and then they're like, I didn't even see it, I didn't even know it. The problem is, is they can be, you can have only a few of them, but you will have a ton of bites, 'cause a single female will bite you multiple times. The challenge is, is they breed in what we call cryptic or hard-to-find sources, they're a container breeder, they like small water sources, very small water sources, they're a backyard breeder, and we can't, we can't go to everybody's backyard, and even if we could, a lot of times residents aren't necessarily willing to let us into their backyard for a variety of reasons. We still deal with, I don't think you're a legitimate agency, and then of course, there's a lot going on, I mean, there's a lot of people that don't trust, even when we're in a, that's the other thing I wanted to mention, all of our employees are in logoed vehicles, they all have name badges, they either are, they have reflector vests that say mosquito control, so if it's a mosquito control employee, they're in a logoed vehicle, all of our employees drive logoed vehicles. So I get it, I get why not everybody wants to let you into their backyard to do a mosquito inspection. So these types of programs enable us to do control over a wide area without accessing everybody's yard space.
I think Bertha had a question.
I think when I spoke to last-
So, as a reminder, any resident can call in for service, and the first step that we do is we go out and we do an inspection, 'cause we're looking for any mosquito development. If we do find mosquito development, we try to do what we call source reduction, so if we can get rid of it, dump it, tip it over, if not, we will treat it. Spraying is really dependent on what we find, so we will set, if we don't find anything, we typically will set traps. If there is excessively high numbers of mosquitoes, we will spray. But we can, I'll be honest, I can, we can put a trap out pretty much everywhere and collect some level of mosquitoes, because we do deal with insecticide resistance, so it's really important that we maintain that tool for when we see disease, or when we have high levels of mosquito abundance. So if we see high levels of mosquito abundance, also when we set the trap, a lot of times we will test them for disease, and if they're carrying disease, such as West Nile virus or St. Louis encephalitis virus, we will then spray for that as well, we will usually do a single barrier treatment at the residents where we found mosquitoes that were carrying disease, and then we do a wide-area adulticide treatment, where we send the spray truck out and we treat a whole neighborhood.
Which you did a few months ago and scared the heck out of us.
That probably, that probably wasn't us, we haven't done one this year, we have in the past, we have and it does, it sounds like a big generator going down the street, that's what ours sounds like, but I would say, as a separate reminder, any resident can get on our spray notification list. Some people get excited about it at first, but then they get annoyed with it later, 'cause they're like, I really didn't care that much to get that notification, mostly because we're spraying after 9:00 PM, so it just depends on your lifestyle and how active you are, but if you like to, you know, always leave your windows open, I would absolutely get on our spray notification list.
I just walked outside and it was like, whoa.
Oh, then in the past, so yeah, I would definitely, if you're somebody that's a nighttime walker.
I just walked outside.
I would encourage, we definitely encourage residents to get on our spray notification list, and if we're spraying in your neighborhood, we will give you a phone call, a text message, or an email, whatever your preference is, to let you know we're gonna be in your neighborhood that evening.
Do you have any recommendations, so anybody can buy over the counter for that?
For spray?
Yes.
Unfortunately, we don't give recommendations on that, mostly because we deal with, it depends on what species of mosquito you're targeting.
Those little, little tiny ones, boy, they bite.
And we deal with a lot of insecticide resistance, but what I would say is, just make sure, when you're, when you're at like Ace Hardware or Home Depot, it's really important that you read the label and that it's labeled for mosquitoes. So not everything's labeled for mosquitoes, make sure that it's labeled for mosquitoes, and when people are treating, like the sprays that we use, they're barrier sprays, and you're treating vegetation, 'cause mosquitoes like to rest in vegetation, and the eaves of your house, 'cause that's what we treat, we're spraying the entire perimeter of somebody's property in the hopes that the mosquitoes are gonna come and rest there before they bite you, but I'll be honest, like if they're, if your neighbors got like a dog dish and they're cranking out mosquitoes, as soon as you walk out your door, they're probably not gonna take a break on your garden wall or your fence, they're just gonna come beeline it for you and bite you, so it's really, that's why getting rid of the sources.
When I leave my house, I spray.
Talk to your neighbors, tell them to call us, let us do an inspection, if we can get rid of the source, that will make a difference, that's what we ask.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's time, and I'm gonna leave.
Okay, thank you, so now we can move on to public comments, is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council at this time?
Good evening again, my name's Fernando Benuelos, I know there was an issue on I Street that one of the lines were broken and the water flooded a person's kitchen, so that person, again, doesn't wanna come forward, so I'm trying to help her out, is who is gonna be responsible for, you know, remodeling her kitchen?
Remodeling?
Because all that water went into their kitchen, and she is a tenant, the landlord has said, guess what, she's, you know, they said she's gonna pay for it, she said, why should I pay for it when that pipe was broken?
That was from no- I think you would need to address the company, so, I don't know.
I think you should get with Javier, he took care of one situation like that.
Or, or just-
That's I Street.
So, we're insured, and so Johnny, he's our fiber-to-the-home supervisor, he comes to City Hall once a week to assess any sort of issues that come up, and he helps facilitate a resolution, so in this situation, I'm more than happy to get the information, the address, whatever the case may be, I have one out, I can grab it for you, and we'll get this resolved.
Okay, thank you.
When we've had issues before, they've come and filed a claim with me, and I realized that it was something that was done by the company, I forwarded it over to them through an email, and they have taken care of it.
Yeah.
So, what would the protocol be with, first with you?
You can send it to me or-
Either, or, probably just so you can get the solution.
The one on I and third, right?
Yeah, I and third.
Heard about that one.
Okay.
Yeah, they can, if they, if they get ahold of anybody, you guys call me, I can direct, we can get them to the right place, and I follow up too, if they, if you guys let me know, I follow up with them to make sure it gets fixed.
That's good, thank you Javier. Any other public comments?
Me too, I have no water in my kitchen, they turned off the water when they busted the line, I'm on the next street over on Fig, and we have no water, I'm having to wash dishes in my bathroom, so, I didn't know how soon they were gonna come back and turn the water back on or something, I have a little bit of water pressure, so.
Maybe get their information as well.
Yeah, just talk to me after, or get, 'cause you shouldn't have low pressure right now, right now?
I have no water in my kitchen.
That doesn't make sense, we shouldn't-
Something else is going on, maybe if you can just check her room and see what's going on, and before-
Was it working before?
I'll check your meter.
Okay.
Is there any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, we can move on to the next item, and that's consent calendar, is there any item in the consent calendar that anyone wants to pull at this time? I have one, and that's the check warrants. Yeah, so there's only one, so let's just go over it, and then-
Check this number.
I have a question in regards to... It's over here. And I did talk to Javier about this before, and I talked to also Serta, and I think I even mentioned it at one of our meetings, about the silicone, let me see here, is it Silicon Valley, that, for the solar treatment, at the treatment plant? First of all, we're paying them, there's a check for 15,000, there's actually two. And my concern is that we have a contract with them, and they've been out of compliance with our agreement, because they have these solar panels that are supposed to rotate and follow the sun, so that way we can get the 100%, you know, sunlight, and so that can produce enough energy, so that we won't have to pay so much in PG&E. And I do see that we have a large PG&E bill, you can't tell on the PG&E bill what the cost is in the wastewater treatment plant, but looking at some of the information that I was looking into, it's approximately maybe 40,000. So, what I did see is that we're producing less than 40% potential energy because of those panels being, not working the way they should, they're not producing the energy necessary to sustain and produce enough to cover that wastewater treatment plant. So what we're doing is, we're actually paying the PG&E bill, which is 35,000, I believe it's a month, correct, is it, on this invoice, I did see 35,000, and I know 35,000 is not gonna be for like City Hall and all the other departments, so I'm assuming that 30,000 is part of the wastewater treatment plant. So what I would like for us to do is to review that contract again, and maybe find an attorney that can review that, and, 'cause they need to work on those, their rotators that rotate, that have been broken for several years, and I brought it up many times, and I really don't get anywhere with that, and I think it's just a lack of not knowing what we can do, but I think at this point, since, but this has been since 2010, they've had this, these solar panels at the wastewater treatment plant. I think they started to not function properly in 2018, 17 or 2018, this is when we had our last engineer, 'cause he discussed this with us before too, and they were not working. So I've been asking for someone to communicate with these, the contractor, with the one we have with the contract with this Silicon Valley, because it used to be a different one, and then they went bankrupt, now it's a Silicon Valley, they took over the agreement, they take over the agreement and everything in that stipulates in that agreement. It's not only what they wanna pick and choose, what they're gonna cover, so if it's only 40% that they're not, they're only providing 60% of our, our energy, and the other 40% is lacking. So this is why we're paying, we're paying so much on PG&E, and we're paying so much on this with Silicon Valley, which was 15,000, and then 11,000, another 11,000 check, so we're paying 35,000 plus 15,000 and another 11,000, you know, we're paying too much than what we should pay for, just to have the energy that we need for that wastewater treatment plant. So I don't know if we can, maybe, Megan, find someone that can review that agreement and see what we can do, because they're, it sounds like they're in breach of their contract. The minute that the other company went bankrupt, they came after us, wanting us to pay them, but they're not, they're ignoring the part that they're not producing what they say that we're gonna produce according to the agreement.
I understand, David, your acting city manager had a consultation with the contractors, and maybe you can update us on where we're at with that?
Yeah, so, so we did, we did have a site walk, so I invited Javier, city engineer
as well, and I met with Reagan Farr, who's one of the owners of that Silicon Ranch Solar Company, and one of his executives showed up, and we did a tour of the panels out there, and they demonstrated that the panels were working, however, the tracking system was not working, so they're not tracking the sun, but they're in a parallel position, parallel to the, to the surface, to potentially maximize the amount of energy that can possibly be obtained in that position, but they did, they did share with us that there is a meter, they shared with us the, the system that's in place out there, and I asked them to produce records over the course of, you know, the last few years, because part of their responsibility is to maintain that facility as far as the grass, keeping the, keeping the grass trim, cleaning the panels, so that they run efficiently and there aren't layers of dust collecting on there, which really doesn't allow that maximum, so they're, they're gonna produce that, he sent me an email right after that, going over, just summarizing what we discussed, and our concerns, that we were not getting our money's worth, this did appear that this, because the tracking system was not working, and evidently that the individual that customized that tracking system is out of business, so to repair that is not possible. So we did discuss compensation for the city, because we are not maximizing that, and it's a potential breach of contract.
It is, it is a breach of contract.
Yeah, so we've, we've had that discussion, so those steps are in place, so the next step is to turn it over to a legal counsel, to see where we're at on that, but they did mention that on the billing, so the billing last month, it was approximately 45,000 kilowatts that the panels generated, and they, you're charged by kilowatt, and so it was, I don't know, like 17,000 or 20,000, so I'm not sure what the rate is per kilowatt, I didn't do the breakdown on that, so we explained the billing, so every time we get an invoice, it shows the amount that they're billing us, but it also shows the kilowatts that it is producing.
And I, I get that, that's not my concern.
Right.
My concern is the other percent, the 40% that we're not receiving, that we're not getting the coverage, because they're not able to fix those rotators, 'cause that's what would provide us the other 40%. So they're, they're still in breach of our agreement, because that's one of the things that they said that we're gonna get 100% coverage, because that was where it installed, they were installed to make sure that they rotated, to get the sunlight, so that it can cover the energy to make sure that we receive our full benefit. So if it's not working, and because they can't fix it, then they need to renegotiate with us a different agreement, because we're losing out, and we're still paying PG&E and high, high energy, and we're paying them, so there is not much of a benefit. So that's why I was, wanna make sure that maybe we can just seek, get some, you know, legal advice as what we can do, because if they're just gonna give us the other breakdown, well here it's this, over here is lovely, but we're still not looking at this side that is still not helping us, because if we can get the 100% that we used to get, that was beneficial, that is why the city of Parlier at that time came into this agreement. So now that it's no longer there, then it's our duty to make sure that they renegotiate a new contract with us then, because why should we pay what we said we were gonna pay, we're not getting what they said they were gonna deliver to us. So that's just my, my concern, and maybe we can look into that, so that way we can address that, because it's been some time, and I know we keep going back with them, and I do know that the last one before silicone- Uh, Silicon Valley, it was a different uh, company that went bankrupt, so like I said, because they took over this agreement. They also have that responsibility.
Uh, Mayor, I'll, uh, I would like to get with um, the city manager on that and we've discussed it a, a number of times and. I concur with your concerns.
Thank you, Megan, thank you so much, I appreciate that, um, I just, so we can at least look into what our options are. And not just let them tell us what they want to tell us and just ignore it, because that's what's pretty much what has been happening. The minute that we don't make a payment, they come hard at us, so I don't think that that's fair.
Yep.
Um, that was just one of my concerns on that one, um, I think we have, the other one is um. I did see a thirty thousand dollar check for LCW. Um, and I did, I did see the breakdown, my concern is um, seventeen thousand dollars for um. There we go, where is that, uh, seventeen, seventeen thousand dollars for the um. I'm down here. Uh, for Garza for the appeal when it was already completed. Neil Costanzo did the appeal, submitted it to the appeals court. So why are we getting billed seventeen thousand dollars when we're waiting for a court date?
Um, you know, Mayor, if it's all right with you, I will follow up on that.
Please.
I don't have an answer for you.
No, that's okay, I just, those are my concerns.
And I have been in touch with the appellate attorneys. And um, it, it had to do with the attorney fees as well as the merits of the appeal. And so it's a fair question and I'll follow up.
Thank you, there's still another one, um. You know, uh, the other one is for the Hall case. Uh, that one's nine thousand, so I think it's probably just. I'm thinking it's, because the, the problem is, is that when we get the check warrants, I don't get too much information.
Understand.
So I just would like to get some more information as to. The nine thousand dollar check for that, when they haven't even gone to court yet, it's scheduled for August.
What check number is that, please?
Um, I didn't write that one down. I wrote down. It's on the breakdown, it's actually on the, it's not on that one, because it's on the breakdown combined. With uh, the thirty thousand, so it's on the wayback page where it gives you a little bit of a breakdown.
You don't have their check number?
I didn't write that down, I just want, asking those concerns so that they can look into them.
And uh, when I make an inquiry, I can inquire based on the name of the case and, and the. The invoice per case, because I'm not sure which.
Yeah, it doesn't give us too much detail, that's why I, I just.
Nor, nor, nor would it for our meeting tonight, but I can.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. There's, okay, the other one is Lemon Tree Property, um, they did receive a check for two thousand five hundred, I know it's not a lot, but. My question is, since we did hire a finance director, I, I was told um. Sorta I, that, that we were no longer going to receive the services from Lemon Tree, is this something that's still from the past or? Or um, why are we still?
We, uh, we gradually tapered off their service, the uh, the, the decision to continue to have Lemon Tree there was for the transition part. So that uh, our new finance director could transition into these uh, into her roles and responsibilities, but uh. It, it's, it's just, it's part of the transition period is, is what I believe, but. Uh, I don't think um, we are seeing that frequency anymore, is, is that, could you elaborate on that?
Correct, I think the last time they came was two weeks ago and they haven't, I haven't asked them to come back yet.
No, that was just my concern, because I know that you had mentioned that they were no longer, and I see that, I was like, okay, what's going on, is he back on?
Yes, and my plan was to completely remove him by the time the new fiscal year.
Something for audit, so that's why I kind of thought, okay, maybe it's from the audit that they worked on, so that's why it was just a question.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's, that, that concludes my, my questions, I don't have any others and anybody else from the council? Okay, so that's it.
You need to take a motion.
Yes, so I do have a motion to approve item one and two from the consent calendar.
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina, do you have a second? By Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, um. Oh, and one absent, four, uh, three, four yes, one absent, sorry. Got ahead of myself, so now we can move on to the next item and that's regular business, uh, Serta?
Yes, Mayor, Council, residents of Parlier, before you, is a recommendation for our, our new city manager employment contract. And staff has completed its comprehensive search for a new city manager and would like to present. The recent recruitment outcome efforts undertaken by the ci, for the city manager position with the extensive assistance of WBCP. WBCP recruiting, the recruitment process consists of three Orion interviews, one ci, one citizen panel and two elected officials panels. And a process involving a comprehensive background and character check, after several candidates were evaluated. One highly qualified candidate was identified, Aaron Palmer. Palmer has extensive experience in the city manager position and leadership roles, he, he possesses all the qualities, qualities desired for this position. Aaron's values and approach align with our organization's mission. And vision, making him an ideal addition to the team, staff recommends council approve the city manager employment contract with Aaron Palmer.
Okay, is there any questions from the council? Let me read them. Any questions from the public?
Mayor, it doesn't say it on staff, on the agenda, but there's a resolution that I passed out to everybody.
I did see that, yeah. So, there's this one, so the number fifty-three?
And I would like to, as city attorney, I would like to just uh. State what the changes are in the agreement, which are quite minor, but when it's appropriate, Mayor.
You can do it now, I, I didn't have no comment.
Um, so it's resolution uh, twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three. And there were several minor changes to the proposed agreement. And I'd like to go over those if I may, uh, the first one is the term of the agreement, the effective date is June thirtieth. Twenty twenty-five and that's paragraph two, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And then going to paragraph six. Uh, D as in dog. At the last sentence. Uh, it should read any remaining administrative leave and then delete will be cashed out every June thirty. And it should read any remaining administrative leave at the end of each fiscal year shall not be cashed out. But may be rolled over into the next year for two years not to exceed a hundred and sixty hours. And I'll provide that language to the, the clerk. And then the last um, minor edit is on the following page under K. Moving expenses. Um, the city will or shall reimburse the employee for all moving expenses, comma. Half about, upon presentation of a moving expenses invoice and the balance within three months.
Thank you, Megan.
And that's the extent of the edits, thank you.
Thank you, so. Go ahead.
My question is, uh, again, I apologize to. The council that I didn't uh, see the qual, the, the district, the description of the new city manager. I would like to know is um, what is, are his uh, experiences and which cities and towns has he worked in? What are some of his achievements and uh, what is his successes as far as them uh, bringing in uh, manufacturing and businesses?
Have that here right now, it's not. With us, this is just his contract, so um, if anything, maybe you can meet with um, Serta and.
Yeah, that background information, I do not have it on me, but we do have it, so uh, yes, and he does have extensive uh. History and background in, in the city management position, but I could provide you that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, and then also if he has a five to ten year, you know, business plan?
Well, that's, that's not on here, this is just a contract and um, what that would probably be once he's here. Go over what he sees, the vision of Parlier, so I think we should just give him the opportunity to get here and. He can give us him, the details himself as, to share with the community is what he sees and envisions, what he can do with his experience.
Okay, and if we, you know, want anybody contacting him, willing to help out, you know, and I have my.
That's why.
Help out too, so, yeah.
That's fine, okay, well, thank you, so uh, so now do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash five-three?
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina and a second by Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries for yes and one absent. Yes, oh, and we're going to do our swearing ceremony right now, so that, we'll take a little break. Um, to swear them in, we'll still stay on live stream, just take the mics off, or no, just for the swearing in and we can just have the mics on. And then if you guys want to take a break so we can. Meet them or, I don't know what you feel like doing, take pictures, okay, all right. Um, Aaron Palmer, could you please join us up here? You'll be fine. Oh, uh, come this way, you can come over here, yeah. She's our city clerk, so she'll be swearing you in. Hi, okay, can you please? Oh, let's get it through, okay. Um, please raise your right hand. I, Aaron Palmer.
I, Aaron Palmer.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
True allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
This obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge, discharge upon the duties which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
He's running away.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Megan. For also assisting in all that process, I know it was uh.
Thank you.
It was, it was good, we finally have our city manager and congratulations uh, to Aaron Palmer. Uh, we look forward to working with you and I think um, you'll do great. I did see that you have uh. Quite a bit of experience, you're working with cities and you know. Um, how governments, how government works, so that's the good thing, you know, uh, to have someone that has the experience and the background. Um, which is important to us, so thank you and congratulations, we look forward to working with you and um, by June thirtieth. I know, Chief wanted to make sure you would sit down there. So we can move on to the next item and. Um, we have item number four and that's Bertha.
Um, Mayor, we are asking the council to approve the, the agreement with Fresno Madera Area. Agency on Aging for the senior meals funding at the Parlier Senior Center, I brought it to you guys, I mentioned it to you as the last time. We're just asking for you guys to formally approve the agreement, they have already delivered a brand new refrigerator. Um, two double ovens, they, everything that was there, they just replaced it with brand new um, equipment. They put in a small refrigerator that will be for the seniors only, so when we rent it out, they will be able to lock it and that will be the, just for them. An ice machine, a food warmer, tables, chairs, shelves. And um, they'll be supplying the meals every day from now on, so we don't have to worry about it, they'll be delivered there, they'll be warm, they'll be having something. Balanced diet, healthy for the seniors, so we're just asking for the council to formally approve this agreement.
So their, their meals are going to come from where?
From the EOC.
The EOC, okay. All right, so I, any questions from the public? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve um.
Motion.
Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash forty-two approving an agreement with Fresno Madera. Area Agency on Aging uh, for senior meals funding. So who, who motioned?
Janie.
Janie, and who's second? Second, Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, four yes and one absent. Um, okay, we can move on to the next item and that's item number five, resul. Uh, presented by Serta.
Mayor, Council, residents of Parlier, before you, is a recommendation to approve. A swimming lessons contract with the Parlier Unified School District. Uh, many months ago, the school presented a proposal to enter an agreement to provide swim lessons to their students. Um, there was a discussion about a rental agreement, but however, that's evolved into uh, the city providing lessons. All at the expense of the Parlier Unified School District, they, they agree to pay for the instructors, the coaches. Uh, the lifeguards, whatever, it takes whatever resources and material that it takes to provide those swim lessons for their uh, summer school students. And the community, they're willing to provide that, the dates are listed. Um. And, and July first through August eighth. And we've got scheduled uh, anywhere from eight forty-five in the morning, the lessons are generally thirty minutes and, and for the older kids, they're an hour. Uh, in the afternoon, they're one thirty to two thirty, but um, fully funded by the school. Uh, there's a contract on hand for approval and once it's approved, the school district will look at it and if they're comfortable with it, they'll approve it and. They've already had uh, an idea of, of what's on the contract, but they're, they're very excited and they're eager to enter into this contract and provide that service for the community. Uh, swimming lessons, it's a life skill, uh, something that they'll carry on and for the rest of their life, it uh, it fosters healthy behaviors. Healthy activities and it keeps our kids in a positive environment throughout, uh, through the summer, so the recommendation is to approve the swimming pool. Lessons uh, agreement with the Parlier Unified School District.
Well, that's good, I'm glad that they finally um, did this, they've been talking about working on something like this, so. Thank you for putting it on the agenda and working with them to bring this um. It's a, a great benefit for the kids, uh, especially now that, when you hear of a lot of, you know, accidents that happen.
Swim safety.
Yes, yes, it's a very important.
Question is, are the kids from the community going to be able to participate in that, will they be trained also?
Yes.
Okay, that's good news, I like it.
Yeah, there's, there's two sessions, so the second session, it's open to the community. So um, the first session and, and they're coordinate, coordinating, coordinating this with their summer school uh, learning session, so it's part of their, their summer school program. And then after summer school, there's a community, uh, free lessons for the community. For students, they have to be Parlor students though, from ages, yeah, the elementary to uh, to high school.
They have to be in summer school in order to.
No, no. The first program.
It's on here.
There's two.
Yeah, there, there's two phases.
Three.
Yeah.
There's three, it's elementary, middle, high school, and then the community swim lessons are after in the afternoon.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Is there any questions for the public?
A question it would be is uh, is the school district going to provide, provide any kind of money? As far as the remodeling, some of the um, you know, some of the issues that we have with the swimming. Uh, have they offered any kind of money, because they got a lot of money, I mean, they take some of their money. That's why I see it.
Um, I think that it's just focused right now on um, on getting the lessons, we are working with the school. Uh, as far as maybe them taking it over, we haven't had that meeting yet, it's, it's. I think our projected date is in August for the. It's, it's, I think our projected date is in August for the city and the school to meet and have some kind of discussion as to whether they renovate it or they take over it. So we haven't decided yet. We haven't had that meeting yet, which will take place again in August so that we can work on something like that.
And can you please clarify on what they mean by taking over? Would that be selling part of it or for them to?
That's where we haven't made the decision yet. We haven't had that meeting yet. It's, it's. We are gonna have this discussion in August.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-43, approving swimming lessons agreement with the, with the Parleyer Unified School District?
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina. Second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, four yes and one absent. Okay, move on to the next item, item number six. Sandra.
Doesn't want to stay, okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Community. Sandra Rodriguez, Senior Revenue Manager. I'm here to present and request authorization to apply for the U.S. Department of Justice Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act Program. This is funding for, to improve the delivery of mental health and wellness for the officers and their families. Any questions on it?
That's great. I think grants are always great. My concern is gonna go back to not the managing. I know we, we already dealt with that and we're working on having, I guess, California Consulting assist with that. My concern is we haven't had no workshop for our budget. We haven't even approved a budget or a continued resolution. When we apply for these grants, we need to have that done before June 30th. Because that's for us to be in compliance. When you apply for these grants, it can potentially hold the application because we're not, like, I know that we're behind on audits and we're trying to get caught up. I get that. And, and we're not the only ones that get behind on audits. It's a lot of issues throughout the county with, with the audits with other cities. But my main concern is, is we didn't start. I had asked several months ago about having workshops and, and this way the community can sit in and, and be involved with the council for the departments. And I know that Dyer in Fresno started his process, cause they're a bigger city. They start a lot sooner, cause they meet, the council meets with every department and looks at their budget and what we can afford and what we can't. And, cause that's gonna determine this next fiscal year. And we did the 2324, now we need 2425. So we're behind and I just, I just wanna make sure that we either have a special meeting for that. And I, and I, I don't know if you remember my question about, about budgets? Cause I did mention that. I just want us to make sure that we need to do that. And, and I, I get it, our department's short staff, but we still need to either, if you have to do a continued resolution, then we need to set up a special meeting for a continued resolution so that we don't look bad with the state because we have nothing. Last time, we didn't have a finance director. We had that other agency working with us. We went several months without even a continued resolution. So I, I think it's really important that we, we work on that. Maybe schedule a, a, a special meeting just to do at least that part. And then when you have the new financier, well, you and, and the new city manager and I don't think we're gonna have time to do the departments and, and do the workshops. So I think it's gonna have to be something that you're gonna have to figure out how to get everything done. Because the continued resolution does help for the meantime, at least to get, get it completed. But I don't know if that will affect the application.
So Mayor, I'll take, I'll answer to that. So we do plan on bringing the budget, the proposed budget for July 3rd for the next meeting. Now, if we need to do it before July 3rd, or July 1st, then yes, we would probably have a special meeting right before to go ahead and.
And you're, and you're normally supposed to do it before the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th? Because that would have still been late.
So we can prepare for that then. And then I do plan on bringing the proposed for July 3rd. That was my initial plan. I figured, I didn't know that it had to be done before the 30th. Absolutely had to be done. So I'll make sure we plan for that.
I'm just letting you know so that way we can get, you know, caught up. Cause I know that there's been, since last year, it's been happening. But I just want us to be caught up so that we are in compliance and it doesn't affect funding. Cause it can affect that.
Yes.
And I want us to continue to receive funding because that helps community like Parleyer to get these extra things that the police department can benefit, our community members, our seniors can benefit from it.
Right.
So if we have to do, if you have it ready for a special meeting be, I don't think we have that much time.
And we don't have that meeting on the 3rd, I believe.
Yeah, so we would have to do it. If you wanna do a continued resolution, just to get that at least before the 30th, we can do that with a special meeting and then continue with the budget. And then when you're ready, we do the budget after you're done.
Okay. I will talk with the new city manager on this and make sure to see what plan we have. But I'm, I'm close to being done.
Yeah, but you're still.
So I, but it's not, yeah.
Yeah, if you're, if you do the continued resolution, you'll be fine. You won't have to work, worry so fa.
So fast on that? Okay, so that's probably gonna be our best bet then.
Then, so we just do like a special meeting just for that one item? And I say one item, cause it tends to happen where we say it's a special meeting for one item and then I see 10.
Yeah.
Just to get that one.
That continuing.
For the 30th and we're in compliance and, you know. Federal government does those continued resolutions all the time.
Okay, not a problem. We'll make sure we get that done then.
So that means that Senator will be good to go with that, right? If we get all that done? Okay, that's good news. Thank you.
So, so just work on the, on the date. So is there any other questions for the grant? I don't think we have any questions. Any from the public? I think that one's good for, is that one the one for, for staff? Or is it the police department? Cause isn't that?
This is for the police department and staff.
Okay, for police department and?
And their families too.
Oh, okay, that's great. That's good. All right. So do I have a motion, Sabrina? And do I have a second? Second by Janie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries for yes and one absent. Seven, item number seven. Chief?
I think it's mine, but I had the chief's name on it. But I'll go ahead and do this one too. This one, it's a.
Well, that's why you said this, the law enforcement, cause it's the same thing pretty much.
This is a request, let me see if I have it right. Request authorizing to accept the mini grant award from the Sierra Kings Healthcare District for the senior community garden development. The district awarded the city of Parleyer 5,232 for the purpose of creating or building up a garden at the sea, at the sea. And the term runs from July 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
I sense it's the same. I don't have any questions. Any from the public? So do we have a motion? Kathy, do you have a second? Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for yes and one absent. Sandra. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, one more. This one, it's also for the police department. It's authorization to apply for the U.S. Department of Justice for the fiscal year 25 COP safer outcomes, enhancing the escalation and crisis response training for law enforcement. This is basically training for the officers on how to deal with difficult situations. So I think if this one, it's a really good grant. We're hoping that we can get this one. There's no match to this one and it will cover the, whatever the incident is for the officer's salaries and benefits and training.
I think that's good. Anytime that it's gonna be to de-escalate situations, it's good. Any questions from our public?
I motion.
Sabrina, motion. Do I have a second? Second, Janie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries for yes, one absent. Next is Sandra, my question.
I know, this is my last one, promise. And this is also for the police department. We've been working on bringing more revenue to the police department. So it's part of the, the goals that we have for this 2526 year. And it's authorizing to apply for the U.S. Department of Justice for the fiscal year 25 Community Policy Development Microgram Programs. And it's to promote new approaches to crime reduction, community engagement, and organizational change to support public safety. There is no match requirement and it's gonna be funding salaries and benefits.
Do we have a motion? Kathy? Second? Janie? All those in favor? Motion carries for yes, one absent. Item number 10. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Welcome to the new city manager, Jeff O'Neil, Community Development Director. Before you tonight, I have kind of a fun item. So through my employer, Provo and Pritchard, I've been providing contract city planning services to the city since 2016. It was being provided at a substantially reduced hourly rate. In 2023, we expanded the scope of services to include community director, community development director services. And at that time, our normal billing rate went into effect. Come 2025, due to some revenue shortfalls, partly from not accurately collecting community development department fees, in conjunction with the increased billing rate, it's kind of harming the community development department. So I was asked to take a look at providing another reduced fee schedule. And so that's what I have before you tonight. Generally speaking, I would give you a hourly rate substantially lower than my standard billing rate, along with our other planning staff for providing planning and community development department services. So we're, we don't have the exact numbers and these will go into the budget when it's presented to council. But we're expecting that it should be about a 15 to 20% reduction in fees that we charge for the services we provide over the course of the next fiscal year. So that's the extent of my report and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any from the public? Okay, we're moving along. So I guess there's no questions. Do we have a motion to approve, approving and modifying the free fee scale for the community development department services?
Motion.
Sabrina? Janie? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four yes, one absent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. And next, item 11. Javier.
Okay. Good evening, Council. So today, on this, on this item on the agenda, we're authorizing the acting city manager to award phase one of the Parleyer Police Department addition and remodel project to better enterprises. So we did go out to bid for the PD remodel. Part of the project was to do in addition to the front of the, of the police station and, which would offer like a, a, a place for the public to come in and, and really nice, you guys saw the renderings, you could have been involved. That was phase one. Phase two was remodeling the inside of the police department, because everything's outdated, bring it up to speed. So right now, we only have money for phase one left over from the money we got from, I believe on that caballo, but one of the, one of the officials that received the grant form. So that'll pay for phase one, but we have applied for a funding through, through, through the federal government essentially Appropriations Committee. And with, with Padilla and Costa, we've. Yeah, so we've reached out and they have 1 million allocation that if the federal budget passes, it'll allow us to also award phase two, which is the remodel of the PD building. So right now, it's, it's on the docket to be approved. If it gets approved by September, we'll have, we can, this will authorize me to award phase one to the contractor. And if that money gets awarded in September, we, we ought, we continue with phase two as well. So instead of having to go out to rebid and, and, you know, start the whole process over again, this authorizes both.
Thank you. Those are the, the 2.5 Melissa Hurtado did several years ago. That's when she was our representative here. And then with, with Costa, he just did that, I think, last year. And then it was because of this change with the presidency, we weren't sure we were gonna get that funding and he came down. He actually came down and met with us, remember, Serta? And to talk to us about it. But it looks pretty good, cause it's still gonna go through and it's already made it the first initial step. We'll just wait for the final step for everything to get approved. And so once it gets approved, then we can actually start working on the, to make sure we complete the entire project. Cause he did ask, his staff did reach out and, and ask, and I think you provided them that information, cause they wanted to make sure that it was a million, not to just start it. And if it was just to cover the entire cost, cause we were a little bit over budget. So once there was explained to him that that was what's going on, that's when he pushed for the allocation from the federal funds, for the federal government. So we look forward to it and I, I can't wait till we get that police department. It was actually since 2016 that I've been fighting on that one, remember, Chief? To try to get these fundings. First it was with Joaquin Ramula, didn't happen. And with Melissa Hurtado and with Jim Costa, we're finally here and we're finally able to start this project that was, it was, you know, long overdue. So thank you Javier for also working on that. And I think we have the other, the contractor that's been working on the design and I know he's, yeah, so I, I, I can't wait till we get that started. So thank you guys. Any questions? Any from the public? Okay, motion from Kathy. Do I have a second?
Excuse me, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, I have a question and I'm looking at the resolution, the second page where it says, please note that this pricing for phase two is valid for a period of two months and is subject to revision thereafter, meaning it can go up?
Well, yeah, I think that he's already gonna start the first phase. The only thing that we're waiting on is the million that covers that Jim Costa funding, but we do have the 2.5.
Okay.
So that, that should cover what they're working on right now.
But not the phase two?
Not the phase two.
But this allows, this allows the city to go forward?
For the, the first stage.
Okay. But on number two, it says the amount of a million, 154, 157 will be processed for phase two.
That's the million that Jim Costa.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Javier, no worries as far as the price going up for phase two?
So two months is assuming we go, let's say we, we award it in July.
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd be July, August. And then so at that point, we hope that we already have.
Word.
Word that it's gonna go through and then adopted in September. So by the time they, it's kinda like a narrow window where if, if it does get passed, then during that window, we should be able to capitalize on that price. If not, we'll have to renegotiate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you'll have to come back with another.
With a different one.
And another. Okay. Change, would that be like a change order?
It would be a change order at that point, or we go out to bid again. But anything happened at the federal government, so that's why it's like, well, it doesn't pass, yeah.
I understand. Thank you for clarification.
Thank you for catching that too, Megan.
Well, actually, Myra asked me and I'm asking you.
Kathy motion?
I don't even know if we did get that part. Did somebody motion?
Yeah, Kathy did.
Okay, Kathy motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sabrina? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, four yes and one absent. Move on to the next item, item number 12. Javier as well.
Okay. Item, item number 12. Resolution of City Council of the City of Parleyer, California, initiate the proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for landscape maintenance and lighting district number of assessments for landscape maintenance and lighting District Number One. So this is, uh, the annual levy that we do every year. We bring it back, um, to council. It's a three-step process. This is the first step of, of the three-step process. Essentially, just, um, this one authorized me to start the, um, the, the proceedings and then, um, start creating the engineers' reports, looking at our expenses for landscaping and lighting, uh, with, with, in, within that district, and then, um, and then putting together, um, documents for the city to, to adopt, um, and essentially, um, charge taxes for, for these, for that maintenance. Um, and then, um, that, so after the third step, that gets submitted to the county, and, and they run it through the tax roll. So it's an every-year thing.
No, I don't think I have any questions because same thing. Any from the public? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Sabrina, second. All right, uh, Janie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Four yes and one absent. And that's the next item is for the lens, um, let me see, thirteen. Um, who is it?
Javier.
Javier? Okay.
Uh, yeah, um, okay, that's right, thirteen. Um, so consideration necessary action on approval of Resolution twenty, twenty-five fifty-one, approving the project list proposed for funding for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for SB One, the Senate, Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand seventeen. Um, so staff is recommending to approve the, the resolution. Essentially, what this one does, um, it, uh, every year, we have to submit a list of what we plan on using SB Ones from, for, and I bring that list to, to you guys. We run our road, our road funds, um, with, with, uh, Street Saver, uh, which is a program where I keep track of all the roads that are the worst, worst condition, best condition. Um, and as we, as we've been doing roads every year, um, and, and doing, um, new sections of, you know, of, of roads throughout the city, um, SB One helps us fund those, and, and this is, this, with this resolution, it allows us to claim the SB One funds. And what I'm proposing for this next fiscal year is Mendocino, um, south of, of Progresso. Let's see, I have it here. And up to the city limits. Um, that's one of our major roads, and it's really, really bad condition, so we're hoping to, to do some rehabilitation on that one for this.
That's great. Any questions? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Sabrina. And Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carry. Four yes, one absent. And last item, my gosh. Uh, item number fourteen, and that is Serta.
Yeah, would like to table this item.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Table this item, please.
Do you want to bring it back for the next meeting and the?
Um, no, let's just wait.
Wait?
Yeah, let's just wait on it for right now.
Okay. All right, well, uh, do I have a motion to table this item till further no, till, till further notice? Uh, motion by Janie. Do I have a second? Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, four yes and one absent. Okay. Alrighty, I think now we can move on to, uh, brief comments. Um. Serta.
Uh, yes, I.
That will be your last one.
Yes, once again, it's a great experience here, and I, I do want to welcome our new city manager, Aaron Palmer. We look forward to working with you, and, and it's, I think it's going to be exciting and, and fun experience, so. And, uh, as always, you know, I, I appreciate our staff. Our staff really works hard. You know, there's, uh, there's a lot we've accomplished, and, and we can always do better, so we'll strive to do better. But, uh, uh, staff is, is doing a fantastic job for the city. I really appreciate all of you and all your support and counsel. Mayor, everybody as well. I really appreciate the cohesive and, and the teamwork. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I want to thank, uh, Chief Serta, our Acting City Manager, for everything he's done, not just for us council members, but for our community, our staff. Um, it's hard to wear two hats, Chief. I did that one when I was talking to you. So I'm like, okay, I got to do this one for the community. I got to do this one as a council. So it is kind of hard to juggle two hats, but you did a great job. I really appreciate everything you have, uh, done for all of us, and I know you're happy to go back to the PD. And I want to welcome my new city manager, Mr. Aaron Palmer. Uh, welcome not only to our community, but to our valley, because I know you're not from the valley. We're here to help in any way we can. Moving our city forward, that's our main goal. And I just want you and your wife to feel at home, being around our community. We're small, but we're all like family. So I want to give you a big welcome, and thank you so much for saying, yes, I'll take the job and I'll come. Thank you.
Um, I want to thank Chief, um, for, yeah, wearing multiple hats. Um, it's difficult. I do it a couple of times. And, uh, it's like Janie says, it's like a council, community member, and, you know, we, we have to play those roles, um, all the time. Mr. Palmer, welcome. Welcome to our community. Looking forward to working with you and you working with us and our community, um, to move us forward. Um, we have a fresh start, new Finance Director, and, um, and yourself, so we're, I'm excited, um, to move us forward. I want to thank staff, um, for all their hard work, um, and, uh, just keeping our city going and running, um, smoothly. Um, community, uh, thank you for being patient with our, um, our projects that are going on in the city. Um, again, like I said before, it's, um, it's a good thing coming. It's just been a really hard road to get to where we need to be. But again, thank you for your patience. Um, we've, I think we all got phone calls regarding, um, the, um, wireless, yes.
Unwired.
Yeah, unwired projects. Um, and again, our, our maps are not up to date. Like I said, my house was built in nineteen fifteen. Um, and, yeah, I guarantee there's some lines under my house that I know probably who put them there. So, so, uh, again, um, just be patient, um, with our, you know, our city staff and our projects that are going on. Um, also, I had a, I brought up something to Myra, um, regarding the community center. Um, I think we need to revisit the rental, um, agreements and, um, and what's being brought to us. Um, there's, our, our equipment in the scene, in the community center is so outdated. Um, I just had to rent it out, and it was for a couple of hours, but our tables and chairs are worn out. Um, i- it's something that we really need to look into. I know we don't have money, but we need to really look at generating money through our rentals. Um, so, yeah, um, yeah, I, I did call Myra over, you know, to look at it, and then she said she was going to work some, on something. And yeah, that's just something to bring up. It's just, it was a concern, and it's unfortunate that, um, our community is renting, um, our facility with not adequate equipment. But again, um, our staff does work hard to kind of keep it in shape. Um, we have all the, um, activities going on in there. They have awesome stuff, and, um, it looks really nice. But it, we, we have to take care of our things to, you know, keep them nice and updated. But again, that's just something to revisit in the future, um, near future, I hope. And, um, maybe just something we can all talk about as a council, um, on those rental, um, fees. Um, but that's it. Thank you.
Uh, I want to say I'm excited for what's the senior Scott. They deserve it. They paid, they say they're due to society for so many years. They do need to be have, step on the, walk on the red carpet. You know, that was very awesome what was done. Uh, Janie, thank you, Berta. That was a big step for the seniors. We need to remember, we have to have them up there, not bring them down. Because what they got left, maybe we got less in life, but we got to be there for them and stuff. Myra, you proved your point. You told Megan, are they going to raise the price? That's money talk right there. That's good, Myra. And I have reached out to Myra and some questions that I have about our, our budget and all that. Hopefully, she gives me a good response. Hopefully, we hurry up and have a roundtable and do all that like last time. That would be great. So like that, we could all know what's going on. And Mr. Palmer, glad to have you aboard. And that's exciting. Now we have our, our Finance Director and our City Manager. Chief did a good job. He got us way ahead of our, our steps, Chief. Thank you. Good job. And Javier? I've forgotten his name. I know. I'm kidding. Hey, Jeff. Thank you for what you do also, okay? Everybody. That's how I did it in perfect. He was all. But anyway, everybody, thank you, guys, and looking forward to working with you. Okay. Rachel, good job on your, sorry I couldn't make it to your soccer game, soccer game, but next time I will, okay?
So I concur with everything that was said already. I don't want to keep saying thank you to everybody all over again. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, update good news for Manning. Um, we, I, with the help of Javier, when I went to, uh, Washington DC, it's the one, one voice trip that we do in, um, DC and whatever concerns that we have or funding that we are requesting or applications for grants. Um, we bring him up up there, and one of the things that I did get a, a concern from our resident at the Salendini Apartments, because they cross over on Manning to get to Dollar General. It's a very heavy congested, uh, uh, yeah, and school too, uh, traffic there on Manning. Uh, thirty-three thousand commuters, that's what we always get on the information that's provided, um, per day. So, um, the request that we did when I went out there, um, was to, um, uh, earmark or an application, which, which is a grant, but the support from, uh, Jim Costa is to, um, to provide us a million dollars for a pedestrian stoplight. And, um, looks like that one's going through as well. So we've been very lucky. I, I say now because before it was always ask, ask, and we were really, it was hard to get the funding. Um, now with, with Jim Costa, Ana Caballero, um, Melissa Hurtado, uh, and Padilla have been very, very, um, helpful to the City of Parlier. And so with that, uh, eventually, once that the budget gets approved, we will be able to see a pedestrian stoplight on Manning, which will not turn, it won't go on when traffic is driving through. It's, it's a pedestrian one. So this way, they know that when the pedestrian gets there to that location, they hit the little, the, the button, it will turn that, uh, light red so that they can safely cross. So at least we'll have one area. We've had several, um, accidents there. I think we had two casualties. And so that's one of the ones that I'm working on, and, um, the other one that I will eventually work on, it will be the one on Academy. We had another casualty there, several casuals, well, just one, I think it was. But that's, well, that's the good news for the pedestrian stoplight. Um, the other thing is, um, which you already mentioned, the million. We went over the million for the Police Department. Uh, retail strategies, and for our new city manager, I will give you this. This is who will be contacting you. Uh, this company, we hired them several years ago, and they are the ones that are actually working on the plans to bring businesses to Parlier. And they have a lot of, um, you'll hear the good information that they're providing. Right now, it's confidential. We can't discuss this because it ruins plans and it ruins agreements and negotiations. So they do provide this, this flyer to when they go to these events out there in LA or, or in Las Vegas. They go to these locations seeking for businesses to come to the City of Parlier. There's three of them that are potentially looking at already at Parlier. Um, so I think, um, with the help with our new city manager, uh, Serta has been part of these conversations, and I had Berta the other day too there when Serta couldn't make it for some reason. I'm like, he doesn't want to be here no more. Uh, he's tired. Um, no, I get it. You're busy. You're dealing with the Police Department. It's, it's hard to manage all the schedules. But, uh, Berta did step in, and there is good news. Um, I know there was a question as far as what's your plan. You, you, you haven't even really been here to know what a plan would be yet. Uh, but you just know that you will have help with those plans and, and working with them, and they're a good, um, I think they're really good at what they do. I think they've been very successful to bring us very, very close to certain agreements. Um, unfortunately, there's times some things happen in those agreements and delays it a little longer. But, uh, I hope that very soon, when they come back, they're going to be doing a presentation here in Parlier on Zoom at the next meeting that we have. It's not going to be too much information. Again, it's still, they're still working through these things. Um, but once they get the finalized agreement and signed and everything's good to go, then of course they will present to the community. They will present to the council so that they can see that it's, our money is worth what we pay for them to do this job, to bring these, uh, businesses here. And they'll be locating, they're looking at mainly on Manning because that's where they get the attention from these big, uh, businesses, these corporations that are looking at Parlier. So I want to share this with you, so at the end, I'll give it to you, so you can have it, just so that, and then I'll do an introduction email. And I need to introduce also Javier because there's some potential, uh, areas that they're looking at, so I'll do that as well. Other than that, I think that everything is looking good. I will schedule the continued resolution just so that we can give you time. I know that's not as easy as just say, okay, it's ready. It takes time. Um, but at, at least, you know, we can do that just to give you more time, and you don't have to rush things. And for the future, just know that it's usually done before the end of the, the month of June. So if, if you think you need time, it's always been done. It's not good to always do those, but, but if you need those continued resolutions, that's the option you have right there to just give you more time to work on what you're working on. Because I know that everybody's wearing multiple hats, and, and being that the Finance Department is, you know, uh, very, very small, and for the funding and the monies that we do manage, it's a lot for our staff. So, um, with that, I don't have anything else but to thank you guys for being here, just staying throughout the whole entire meeting. I hope it's not too late for you guys. But, um, thank you again, as they said, you know, welcome, and we look forward to working with. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Javier. Thank you, guys. All right. And that's it. We don't have no closed session, right?
Closed session.
One item?
But I, I would like to request, uh, after I read it, I would like to request just a, a few minutes in between them. So on the closed session, it's, um, conference with legal counsel, public employee employment, city attorney, government code, section fifty-four nine fifty-seven. And I don't know if there's any public comment on the closed session or not.
Is there any public comment? No.
Okay. So, uh, so.
Did you want to work, talk?
If you want to adjourn the regular meeting, and then we'll take five minutes.
Okay, sounds good. All right, then, uh, we're going into closed session, and we'll be back. Thank you.
Okay, we're back from closed session and there's nothing to report and time is 9:35 meeting adjourned. Thank you.
And the next...